Mr. President, the minutes please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we waive the reading of the minutes as all members have copies and copies are on file in the office of the city clerk.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Perkins. Is there any deletions, corrections, or additions to the minutes as presented? Mr. Perkins.
Your Honor, I'd just like to make a correction to item number... Correction to the minutes. Correction to the minutes. It stated that I was absent. I was actually working that evening, and I'd just like the record to reflect that. And it's more than just semantics. Thank you.
Okay, so you are absent, but you'd like a notation made that you were called away to work. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We'll certainly make a correction in the final minutes. Any other deletions, corrections, or additions to the minutes as presented? Seeing none then, all those in favor, acceptance of the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent calendar for June 1st, 2010 reads as follows. Number one, receive the communication and approve the appointment of Louise McMahon as an alternate member of the Fair Rent Commission. Number two, receive the communication and approve the appointment of the firm of McGladory, Pullen and Pullen as the city's independent auditors. Number four, receive the communication and approve a one-year lease extension of the Candlewood Lake concession stand to Debbie Negri, the former LEC. Number six, receive the memorandum and approve the appropriation of $160,552 to the ambulance fund budget. These monies will be acquired from the surplus in the ambulance fund from this fiscal year. Number 12, receive the memorandum and approve the recommendation of the Office of the Tax Cluster transferring $260,495.63 to the suspense list for uncollected year 2,000 motor vehicle taxes. Number 13, receive the communication and adopt the revised city resolution for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant as presented by the City Director of the Civil Preparedness. Number 14, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to receive $2,500 grant from the Connecticut Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security to purchase a computer for the Department of Civil Preparedness. Number 15, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to allow the City of Danbury Police Department to apply for and accept funding from the United States Department of Justice Assistance. This funding is not to exceed $24,786. Number 16, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to allow the City of Danbury Police Department to accept funding from Keep American Beautiful Inc. through its graffiti hurts program. This funding will be in the amount of $2,500. Number 17, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to allow the City of Danbury to apply for and accept funding from the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board for the State Youth Employment Program offered through the State of Connecticut Department of Labor. If awarded, the funding will not exceed $94,286 and will allow the City of Danbury to employ up to 60 student participants from the July 1st, 2010 to September 30th, 2010. Number 19, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to allow the City of Danbury in conjunction with the Danbury Youth Service to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Education. This funding will not exceed $70,000 and will be used to support youth and family counseling, crisis intervention, and substance abuse prevention. Matching funds will be required and appropriated through the 2010-11 Danbury Youth Service Budget. Number 20, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to allow the City of Danbury Health and Human Services Department to enter into agreement with the State Department of Agriculture to receive funds in the amount of $1,062. These funds will be used to supply supplemental staffing to the WIC program. Number 21, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to allow the City of Danbury to apply for and accept funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Funding for the time period of August 1st, 2010 to July 31st, 2011 will total $678,244. Number 24, receive the reports from the City of Danbury Planning Commission and the City Engineer. Approve the request for water extension 53 Lake Avenue Extension, subject to compliance with the standard city engineering department conditions and submission of plans and documents satisfactory to Corporation Council's office. Number 25, receive the ad hoc committee's report on seven new street easement rights to drain and take no action. This, sir, is the consent calendar for June 1st.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and acceptance. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, I would like a notation made since the mayor did not forgot to direct the clerk to call a roll. We have 21 members present and no absences. Oh, excuse me. Mr. Riley is absent. 20 present, one absent. Mr. Riley, I believe, is out of town on family business. Got that? Okay. You're welcome. Okay, item 1 and 2 are consent. Madam Clerk, item 3, please.
Communication, Honeywell Energy Performance and Capital Improvement Project for Danbury Public Schools.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Ms. Steve Demici?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to send this to an ad hoc consisting of the Director of Public Works, Finance Director, Director of Public Buildings, and Corporation Counsel.
Director, ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilwoman Stanley, Councilwoman Teicholz, and Councilwoman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item 4 was consent. Item 5, please.
Communication, road acceptance and drainage easement from Bayberry Lane.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilwoman Teicholz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to Planning Corporation Counsel and City Engineer for reports.
Seeing no objection, it is so ordered. Item 6 was consent. Madam Clerk, item 7, please.
Communication, traffic control easement, Boeinger Engelheim Pharmaceuticals. Dear Mayor Bowden and City Council Members, the city is presently working on an infrastructure improvement project along Briar Ridge Road in the vicinity of Boeinger Engelheim Pharmaceuticals Incorporated facility. This project is being funded by the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development Grant. An easement is needed over a portion of the Boeinger Engelheim property adjacent to Briar Ridge Road for the traffic, for the installation of traffic control devices and appurtenances. Copies of the map and legal description for the proposed easement are enclosed for your reference. We, therefore, request that the City Council authorize the City Corporation Office to take the actions warranted to acquire this easement. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact us. Very truly yours, Fareed Corey, City Engineer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilwoman Negerchov.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and authorize the Corporation Council's office to take the actions warranted to acquire the easement for the installation of traffic control devices at this site.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Seaberry. Is there any discussion relating to this particular item? Mr. Rotello? And referral to Planning Commission as well? Okay, Mr. Rotello.
Thanks, Your Honor. The representative of the Sixth Ward has been following this project for some time, and we're excited to see its conclusion, especially with the reserve going in and school buses going by and general levels of activity have been increasing in that area. There are a couple of issues that I'd like to point out. About a year and a half or possibly as long as two years ago, the council requested the name of Briar Ridge be changed to Bramble Ridge, that particular section. And in conversations with some of the firms up there, they would be interested before they pay for signage and some of these new curb cuts to find out exactly if that's going to happen or not. A survey was supposed to have been sent out 18 months or so ago. It hasn't been done yet, so we would request that zoning, the planning commission, take care of that, get the survey out and find out where the residents stand on that particular issue. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion relating to this particular item? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 8, please.
Communication, drainage easement 12 Dixon Road.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to have this referred to the City Engineer, Planning Director, and Corporation Counsel for a report.
Seeing no objection, it is so ordered. Madam Clerk, item 9, please.
Communication, request for water extension 6 through 8 Marjorie Street.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to have this referred to the City Engineer, Planning Director, and Corporation Counsel for a report.
Seeing no objection, it is so ordered. Item 10, please.
Communication, request for sewer and water extension 44 Oldridge Berry Road.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to have this referred to the City Engineer, Planning Director, and Corporation Counsel for a report.
Seeing no objection, it is so ordered. Mr. Knapp, number 11. Cut to the chase. Madam Clerk, number 11.
She's got to do her part first.
Madam Clerk, number 11.
Communication, request for sewer extension 8 Rose Street.
Mr. Knapp, fire away.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to have this referred to the City Engineer, Planning Director, and Corporation Counsel for a report.
Seeing no objection, it is so ordered. Item 12 through 17 are consent. Madam Clerk, item 18, please.
Resolution, FEMA assistance to firefighters' grant from the Fire Department. To Honorable Mark Bowden, from David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance, attached for your review is a resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Fire Department to accept funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency through its Assistance to Firefighters Grants Program. This funding, if awarded, will be used to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus, gear for the department. Replacement of department air packs is vital to the continued safety of our firefighters. The total grant request is for $263,305. If awarded, funding from FEMA will not exceed $211,000 with the required city share not to exceed $53,000. The city share will be met through the capital budget. Funding awards will be announced in the 10-11 fiscal year, and the grant period will overlap into the 11-12 fiscal year. The City Council is respectfully requested to consider this resolution at its next meeting. Please contact me should you require any additional information.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Chief Kern?
I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and adopt the resolution to allow the City of Danbury to accept the funding from FEMA through its Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program to purchase CVA gear for the Fire Department.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Sheeney. See any discussion related to this grant opportunity? Discussion related to the grant opportunity? Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. With regard to the $53,000 or the not to exceed $53,000 and that coming through or from the capital budget, exactly where would that be coming from line item is that money already earmarked for something and we'll now have less of that to allocate to that particular line item?
Mr. St. Hilaire?
Yes, you may recall in the next year's budget, we have $150,000 set aside for air packs in the capital budget that would be coming out of that line item.
And if I may follow up, Your Honor, the remaining amount, let's say we do get the maximum grant, then it'd be $97,000 remaining. What would that be then utilized for?
All of it, including that $97,000 remaining, would be used for air packs. This is to help us leverage, leverage the money for air packs. That's what it would be used for.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Sadi. Further discussion? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds on the grant. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Item 19 is consent. 20 through 21 were consent. Madam Clerk, item 22, please.
Resolution, Stanley Roof School Roof Replacement. Dear Mayor Bowden and City Council Members, Stanley Roof Elementary School Roof Replacement, prior to start of design and construction of the above-mentioned project and in order to be eligible for partial state funding, which is 49% of this project, the city is required to submit a resolution to the State Department of Education Bureau of Schools' Facilities that include the three following items. Number one, establish a school building committee as follows. City members, Fareed Corey, Chairman, Daniel Garrick, Richard Palanso, Charles J. Volpe, Jr. School Department staff would be Eleo Longo, Angelo Rodriguez. Board of Education members, Eileen Alberts, Kathleen Molinaro, and City Council Member Fred Visconti. Please note that the above committee members have been previously approved for all school projects as per Comic Council approval noted in the minutes of the special Comic Council meeting on June 22nd, 2009. Second requirement is that the City Council authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Stanley Roof Elementary School Roof Replacement. Number three, that the City Council authorize the City of Danbury Board of Education to direct the Superintendent of Schools to file a grant application with related documents to the State of Connecticut Commissioner of Education and to accept a grant for state reimbursement funding for the Stanley Roof Elementary School Roof Replacement. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Very truly yours, Antonio Idarola, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Cavill.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and adopt the resolution that will hopefully allow us to accept grant funding for the replacement of Stanley Roof School Roof, which covers three parts. Establishes a school building committee as presented in our book. The City Council authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Stanley Roof Elementary School Roof Replacement, and that the council authorizes the City of Danbury Board of Education to enable the Superintendent of Schools to apply for the grant funding through the state if it's available to us.
Actually, the application goes through our engineering department. But having said that, Mr. Cavill had a lengthy motion, but I did hear a second on it, made by Mr. Seaberry. Mr. Idarola, because you're in your beautiful purple shirt, which I really have an affinity towards. Could you, I've had some questions and some inquiries made by the members of the public about the cost of the roof. In other words, our initial engineering, I think, estimate was around 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars. People were sending me emails and saying, "I could do that roof for 500,000 bucks." Talk a little bit about what's involved in this kind of project and why it's so costly.
First of all, it's a very large roof, and it cannot be all ripped at once. It has to be done in sections. And the due diligence process, which, thank God, we did, we did numerous cores of the roof, and we found an asbestos membrane vapor barrier that actually sitting underneath the entire roof. That would have been a big change order had we not cored the building. There's pockets of moisture in some areas which may require some deck repairs. All of that is included in this 1.7 million. And 1.7 million isn't only the cost of construction, it's the cost of the design and the cost of doing the inspections during the construction process. Roofing projects aren't like they were 20 years ago. They're very complicated. There's a very strict requirement now for vapors that develop during the construction process. We're now using a glue that actually does not emit vapor. It's a low-vapor glue, and all of these unfortunately are reflected in the bottom line of the project.
Okay. Does, members of the council have other questions relating to this particular project? Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. If you could just give us some kind of a timeline as to what we're looking at to have this project moving forward. I know that this is just a grant to help supplement us on the money we've already approved, so if you could just...
Sure. Our intention is, as of July 1st, immediately hire an architect. We do have some preliminary engineering work that has already been done. Then we'll actually hire him, bring him on board, and go through the design process. We're not going to be replacing the roof this summer. There just isn't enough time, and there isn't enough time to actually bid it out properly. Best time to really bid out a roof project is right around January. You're going to be the first in line for a nice competitive bid. We'll even procure the materials sometime in February or March, and then immediately, as soon as the kids are out of school, we'll start the project. So that's our intent.
Could you talk real quick about your bid process?
Sure. We prepare a set of documents that are actually performance documents. It's very easy in the roofing industry to specify a specific manufacturer. We try not to do that. We try to really prepare what's called a performance spec, which allows a lot of people to meet the requirements. Overall, what we're really looking for is a 30- to a 40-year life expectancy on a roof. That's really the performance that we're looking. And then the type of a roof, either a four-ply roof or an EPDM roof. So that's how generic we make it, so it allows a lot of people to come in and actually bid on it. And we've been doing roofing projects between Fareed and myself. We have a lot underneath our belt, and our building superintendent has a specific roof that he likes. We try to accommodate him, but still keep the openness of the bidding so we get as many bidders as we could. And quite honestly, Park Avenue Project was a perfect example that we had some great bids on that project, and that came out perfect.
Did. That did. Further discussion relating to this particular? Mr. Rotello.
Thanks, Your Honor. Just briefly, does the state mandate any conditions on acceptance of the grant?
They're going to require what's called a full replacement system. You can't go in and do a maintenance project and expect the state to participate in it. So that's really their requirement. There's a lot of other design features that have to be incorporated because they changed the codes about, I don't know, probably two or three years ago. There's a minimum pitch requirement that's going to require some modifications to the pyramids.
Thanks.
Mr. Sadi.
Mr. Idarola, so then anyone who spoke at any of these public hearings and said that they could do it for a certain price, they're more than welcome to go through the city website and submit a proposal through the bidding process?
Absolutely. And I welcome them to read the spec and the plans and then submit the bid.
If you can do it for 500 grand, come on in. We'll hire you.
Come on in. Actually, call me tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Idarola. Mr. Trumbatta?
With the vapor barrier...
Mr. Arul.
Is the asbestos removal, is that what would have creeped up the actual cost, the environmental, the EPA?
Yeah. The cost to remove the vapor barrier, and we're thinking it's really the glue that actually is, has the asbestos material in it, isn't so much the barrier itself. So that means there's a lot of scraping and everything else. So we have an allowance now, and we got some preliminary numbers from a few asbestos removal companies of what it would take to, you know, do that. And that's what's really brought the number up a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbatta. Any other questions relating to the roof replacement? Mr. Cavill?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Idarola, are we going to be doing this during the summertime while the kids are not in school?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then is also part of this cost going to be for air quality testing and, you know, things that would surround to make sure the asbestos levels haven't contaminated the classrooms or...
Absolutely. Although it's exterior asbestos removal, which means the conditions that we have to test are a little less lenient, you still have to do it. There has to be protection of fans, make sure nothing gets drawn into the school, and we verify that. You know, you could cover a fan up, but there's always a possibility there might be a rip in the barrier, so we do some confirmatory tests just to make sure there's no possibility of any asbestos that's gotten into the school from the exterior work.
Any other discussions relating to the replacement of the roof at Stanley Roof School? Mr. Seaberry?
Just a quick one, if I might. Obviously, the roof needs to be repaired, but what kind of shape does it end? If we're going to put this off to next year, is it going to do more harm during the course of school year?
Yeah, we, it's in bad shape, and we're keeping our fingers crossed. We did a couple patches last year. We're probably going to have to do a couple more patches this year. We're going to re-inspect it once the kids are out of school and do whatever we need to do to get it through one more season. But with the funds being available in July, there's no way with the requirements for asbestos removal, you can't physically remove asbestos today if kids are in school. With all of the safety barriers that we put up and with all of the confirmatory tests, the state basically said, "We just don't want it to happen unless it's an emergency, and then you have to make special provisions." So the process, in order to meet the process, there's no way to get it done at the start of next year.
This is the worst roof in our inventory.
Yeah.
No question about that, right, Rick?
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's number one on the...
It's number one on the hot sheet. Any other discussion relating to the roof at Stanley Roof? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. That was item, let's see here, that was item 22, so Madam Clerk, item 23, please.
Resolution, open space bond acquisitions from the Ives Trail Greenway. Dear Mayor and Council, the attached resolution proposes to obtain your approval for the acquisition of the above- referenced easements, which will constitute sections of the Ives Trail Greenway pursuant to the open space bond acquisition of 2008. These properties have been identified as suitable and desirable for the goals of the Open Space Initiative as well as for the Ives Trail Greenway. An interest in conveying these easements to the city has been expressed by the owners of the property. Thank you for consideration in adopting the proposed resolution. Please feel free to give us a call should you have any questions. Very truly yours, Raymond P. Yaman, Associate Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move that we adopt the proposed, you know, resolution, and again, express our thanks to the Ives Trail Greenway Task Force that has worked so long and hard to make this a reality.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Cavill. Discussion? Discussion on this project? Yes, Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through to Corporation Counsel, the resolution request is for $15,600, and the communication indicates that the property owners are amicable to this. I know the resolution contains some standard language regarding the need to, if necessary, to move towards eminent domain or litigation if necessary, but I'm hoping that the communication, the cover communication means that the three parcels, those owners are agreeable to this, and we will not have to litigate or use eminent domain.
Yes, that's correct. We're fairly certain at this point that we've nailed down the negotiations on the number, and we're only talking about a few minor changes in the document at this point. I'm dealing with an attorney for the, representing two of these three parties. She's already talked to her clients, and she's, they have no objection to the numbers we've proposed.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We've actually shat away from using eminent domain in some cases and rerouted the trail just because we didn't want to get into lengthy litigation, but good comments, Mr. Sadi. Further discussion relating to this acquisition? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Item 24 and 25 were consent. Mr. Seaberry?
26, correct?
Madam Clerk, item 26, please.
Ad-hoc report, lease, Oldridge Berry Road.
Mr. Seaberry?
Yes, sir. Ad-hoc report, lease, Oldridge Berry Road, May 20th, 2010. Chairman Greg Seaberry called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM in the Caucus Room, City Hall on May 20th, 2010. Committee members were Nagerchov, Sheeney, were present. Council members, Tomino, Teicholz, Exoficio, were also present. Wayne Shepherd, Director of Economic Development; Attorney Robert Yaman, Chief Counsel for the City of Danbury; Mayor Marky Bowden; and Dennis Alpern, Director of Planning, were present. Ted Hadad, working with Paul Foley; Paul Scousell, representing the LEC; Warren Shalat, Principal of Realty Equities Attorney; Cliff Claude, Pirilit and Associates; and Paul Foley, Principal of Realty Equities, and members of the public were also in attendance. Chairman Seaberry stated the purpose of meeting was to discuss proposed lease of, for Old Ridge Berry Road. Attorney Yaman advised that the ground lease project was, has been proposed to lease the acreage and construct mixed-youth project, which would include a 40, sorry, 400-seat theater and retail space. The retail space would include restaurants and shops. The lease currently under review, and it would involve a payment of 2.5 million upfront at the closing. The proposal for the long-term lease with no tax deferrals, Attorney Yaman advised that the proposal is for the best use of the property and would benefit the city in several different ways. A 99-year lease is proposed with an option of another 50 years. There will also be an option to purchase, built into the lease, the fair market value of the time. Mayor Bowden stated that this proposal would have a profound economic component and would provide construction jobs and permanent full-time jobs. The proposal is for low-intensity neighborhood lifestyle center, and that the city just purchased 200 acres in immediate area. Mayor Bowden advised that he would like to have a contract by June 30th, 2010. Ted Hadad advised that the project is ready to move forward to the application process. Dennis Alpern stated that the uses for the theater, retail, restaurant, and possibly a parking garage were all permitted uses. There was no language for studies, for studios, and that would be considered auxiliary use. He stated that he does not see, he does not foresee a problem with the proposal provided a zone change as granted. Wayne Shepherd stated that jobs would be brought to the community. He was impressed with a similar site he visited in Pleasantville, New York. Councilman Tomino requested a clarification for access. There is a secondary road off the Reserve Road, and there may be a secondary road for emergency process or access. Mary Saraceno resident requested information regarding the location of the property. Maps were provided to view the exact location. Councilman Nagashov moved to recommend the lease of this property to Realty Equities Group under terms of the conditions as described and negotiated subject to plan report. Public hearing and posting as required by law was seconded by Councilman Chinisi. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Councilman Chinisi moved to, moved to adjourn at seven-thirty PM, seconded by Councilman Nagashov. Motion passed unanimously. Respectfully submitted, Greg Seaberry, Chairman Shay Nagashov, and Ben Chinisi.
Thank you, Mr. Seaberry. With your pleasure, counsel. Mr. Tomino?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to public hearing.
Seeing no objection, this item has been referred to public hearing to be followed by committee of the hall. Having said that, we'll move to item twenty, and there'll be a concurrent planning review as well. Item twenty-seven, department reports. Mr. President?
Your Honor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the department reports, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the Legislative Assistance Office.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Nagashov regarding department reports. Quickly before discussion, I just want to publicly congratulate Ducar, Mr. Antonio Idarola, entire staff for working so hard on Main Street and the surrounding Main Street area for our parade. They did a phenomenal job, and things really looked super, so pass it along to the ladies and gentlemen that are working in, in that division. I also want to congratulate the Public Works Department in general for marching in the parade. And just to dispel any rumors, we did not pay Public Works to march in the parade. They volunteered to do this because they're proud of their division, and they're proud of the services they delivered to the residents. And we didn't show off new vehicles that we just went out and spent all kinds of money on. We are taking care of the taxpayers' dollar by watching the equipment we've already purchased. So in fact, I've never seen that equipment look so signed up, and armor-all tires and the whole bit. So I want to congratulate, and also Mr. Idarola and his sidecar. With Mr. Corey riding in the sidecar, that was a little weird. I have serious questions about you two with a purple shirt. But having said that, good job by the whole team. And chiefs, thank you for your support as well. Just a great day for Danbury. Great way to show off the city with that entertaining discussion on department reports. Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, very quickly, would like to thank Mr. Casumpis from your office, Mr. Idarola and his staff, Sean Stillman, and whoever else if I'm forgetting for helping out in a situation that we had for about the past month. It got cleared up. Everything was taken care of, and everybody's happy, so I'd like to thank them very much.
I'll pass it along. Mr. Casumpis had a baby this weekend.
Hey!
Forgot to mention that.
I think so.
Little boy Max, actually. His wife Alicia had a baby, and, but he is a proud father. Told me he cried like a baby and the whole bit, but he's anxious to get back to work. I'm getting text messages and emails from him every five minutes, so, but we wish him well, and we're certainly happy everything went according to plan. So congratulations, Ted. And thank you, Mr. Visconti. I'll share that with Mr. Casumpis. Mr. Cavill?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the chief of the fire department.
Chief Harrell, please.
Chief, I was wondering if we could just mention, in your monthly report, you had received several donations, one through the Neighborhood Assistance Act from Dr. Bedoukian, and another set of donations you received from Carmine Plumbing, Listaco Refuse, Bob Arcanti Concrete Service, and Ed Kowalski from Bosco and Raj. And I was wondering if you'd just elaborate a little bit on that, and these fine businesses here in the city of Danbury for their generosity.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the opportunity. The first one you mentioned, Dr. Robert Bedoukian made a donation of twenty-five thousand dollars through the Neighborhood Assistance Act program that's under the auspices of the State of Connecticut. And that money is going towards a training program for the fire department in a technical rescue, training class for trench rescue. It's something that we've been looking to do for the last several years and been unable to do it because of budget restrictions. And that generous donation will allow us to train as many as twenty of our, up to twenty of our people in, in a trench rescue, which actually gives a lot more training than just rescuing in trenches. It's a technical rescue training program that allows us to use a lot of skills and equipment that we need to keep certified on. The, the other four donations, each of three hundred dollars, those four individuals generously gave their money to create and build a roof training prop at the fire headquarters, or I'm sorry, at the fire training facility on Plumtree's Road. What that is, is roof operations are a critical aspect of any firefighting operations. We need to do that to affect rescue, to affect the extinguishment of the fire. And what this allows us to do is to operate on a roof that's only several feet off the ground, so that we're not working in a too hazardous condition, and allows us to do trench cuts, allows us to do ventilation cuts in a simulated roof environment in a very safe way. And these four gentlemen got together knowing that we had a need, and after discussions, came up with the, the donation. And all that money was put towards that roof prop, the material for the roof prop. This has been a year-long process. The cement and the footpad was laid last year about this time. And in the meantime, we've been trying to raise the money, and these gentlemen stepped forward. The roof is, roof prop is under construction. The donation for the construction is also being done for free from a company, I believe based in Bethel, Jim Belet Construction. And they're actually in the process now of constructing this. This is going to be a very vital tool in our, in our toolbox there at the fire training school, and I'm, I'm very thankful that they've done that for us. And as, as, wish any of you would come by and stop by the fire training school. You can see this in the process, and you can see how we use it, because we'll be using this very frequently as soon as it's built.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Cavill?
One more follow-up. Chief, could you just repeat that again? I'm sorry, when you walked up, your bowtie kind of just took me, and I missed the whole thing.
The mayor would have said something except the purple shirt took it away.
This is getting to be a very strange meeting. I do want to thank Dr. Bedoukian for, this is the second large donation that he's provided to the City of Danbury via the Neighborhood Assistance Act. So he's been a wonderful strategic partner for the fire department, so I want to publicly thank him as well. Further discussion on department reports. Mr. Arcani?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to direct this to the chief of police. Chief, I'd like to commend you and your officers on that speedy arrest for that homicide that we had here in Danbury on Smith Street. And it sounds like you got the right guy, and hopefully we got a quick conviction on that. Also, chief, how are we making out with our ICE, our ICE officers?
You had to go there, didn't you, Mr. Arcani?
Well, yeah.
It was such a nice meeting. Come on up, chief.